Good evening, everybody. This is Doug Reinstein. We're going to wait another minute or two as people are joining the session. We have an exciting agenda tonight with a lot of our educators of the year. So we have quite a large group of people joining. So we'll get started in about a minute or two. Okay, let's get started. I know we have some people who will still be joining as we get started. Bill, can I get a motion to return from exec session?
So moved.
Angela, second. Okay, we are back from exec session. Could we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, let's get started. We have an exciting agenda tonight. Let me just outline how the night is going to roll. I have a brief statement to read in the beginning. Then we'll go to our student representatives who are joining us this evening. And then the bulk of our superintendent's report will be recognizing our six educators of the year. We have our educators, we have our PTO presidents. And of course, we'll hear from all of them. Then we have our attorney coming tonight to deliver ethics training for us. Then we'll go through the rest of the agenda. Like our previous Zoom meetings, we will have one public hearing where you can ask questions about any item on the agenda or other questions. And then we'll unmute people if they want to ask a question or make a comment at that time. So let me start. As we continue to adjust and adapt to do whatever we have to do to make this new normal work, my thoughts are with you and your families. And I hope you're staying safe and everyone is healthy. The last two months have been an emotional roller coaster. I've been trying for all of us, but I continue to be inspired when I look around Berkeley Heights and see the goodness in people and the genuine acts of kindness, both large and small, that are happening every day. These gestures of warmth, strength, and caring give me the confidence that in time we'll emerge more united than ever before. In tough times, you find out who people really are. We have seen amazing examples of how self-interest gives way to shared interest. Everyone by now has heard that Governor Murphy has made the decision to close schools for in-person instruction for the remainder of the current school year. That means today marks the end of week eight of a total of now 14 weeks where our students will be learning remotely, something nobody ever envisioned. I'm confident that just about everyone would have liked to return to school and participate in the various year-end events, celebrations, and promotion ceremonies. Although I don't attend all of the end-of-year celebrations, I do understand the importance, the meaning, and the proud feelings that are tied to defining moments, certainly ones like graduation. I do empathize with those who are missing out on arguably the most fun and memorable weeks of any school year. That said, our very capable and caring principals are working with both staff, students, and parents to virtually replicate some of these end-of-year celebrations. You'll hear word from them in the coming weeks. It's also Teacher Appreciation Week, and there's no better time to highlight our continued appreciation of our teachers, everything they have done during our transition to remote learning. Their dedication to our students is unmatched, and their commitment to give our students the best learning experience possible is recognized by everyone. And also a shout out to our spring coaches. They didn't simply just toss in the towel because their season was delayed. They customized home workouts, shared motivational videos, and had athletes watching previous year's game field to get ready for the hopeful start of the season, which unfortunately didn't occur. I received a note from a parent last week that summarized remote learning and teacher feedback very well. It read as follows, quote, "I never would have imagined that the transition from classroom education to online education could be so quick and seamless. While I hear parents from neighboring towns and work colleagues complain bitterly about closed schools, it just seems to work in Berkeley Heights, and it works well. We feel very lucky with the way that this has worked out. Kudos to whomever made the decision to work with Google Classroom and Zoom to buy devices for all the kids, which allowed for a rapid rollout, and most of all, to the continued efforts of our teachers who actively engage our children daily." It certainly was nice to receive that email. On a more personal note, I've enjoyed watching the different school videos and seeing our teachers, many with their own kids joining them, connecting from home with their students. I also hear that Mrs. Nardi reads bedtime stories to her Hughes family. These are all terrific happenings, and I'm sure I missed a few. And on the community front, there was an unbelievable showing of support to celebrate Sophie's ninth birthday. It was heartwarming to see her alongside her family as our first responders and dozens of families drove by, sunroof open, balloons flying, horns honking, to celebrate her special day. Our frontline appreciation group continues to raise funds and deliver meals each and every day to our frontline workers. They've raised an incredible $50,700 and have spent close to $40,000 of those dollars at our local restaurants and delivered a staggering 4,567 meals, a truly remarkable accomplishment. I'm equally impressed with what the new Business Aid Berkeley Heights group has done in a very short time. This group was started by my friend Cheryl Manfreda to collect donations and provide emergency assistance to grants, assistance grants to our town's small businesses. These are the very same small businesses who help towards our schools fundraisers and often directly sponsor events. We have been extremely fortunate that so many of these businesses have been there for our students year after year. And it's heartening to see as a community, we have stepped up to return the favor. In just two weeks, this group has raised $54,100. Just yesterday, distributed the first round of grant checks to 45 of these local businesses. It is kindness like this where Berkeley Heights shows its true colors. I'd also like to wish a happy Mother's Day to all the moms and grandmothers who support our children in the community with love. Mothers make sacrifices for their family each and every day without expecting anything in return. They're just happy to see their children happy. As we continue on this journey, I appreciate everyone's commitment to Berkeley Heights and our school community. I've said many times that Berkeley Heights is a special town. Our residents have never shown more brightly. As we continue to come together, let us move forward with determination, resiliency, and hope for brighter days ahead. I'll conclude where I started. I hope you and your families continue to be safe and healthy. This crisis has revealed a great deal about who we are as a community, and I'm moved by your continued resolve to get through this, quote, "as best as we can." Thank you. As we move on to the rest of the next part of the agenda, could I get a motion for the approval of the minutes from our April 23 meeting?
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are now part of the record. Donna, correspondence?
There is no correspondence on tonight's agenda.
Great, thanks. Let's move on to our student representatives. Can we make sure that Alex Janiak is promoted? Do I don't see Alex?
Just promoted him, sir.
Great, Alex, welcome.
Hello.
How's it going, Alex?
Hi.
Great, thanks for joining. The floor is yours.
All right, so there haven't been any particular activities taking place among the GL student body other than the NHS tutors returning, though I can speak on the current state of students and online learning. Many seniors are obviously bummed about the year ending remotely, but from what I've heard, most students are understanding and are making the best of what they can. A lot of seniors are also looking forward to hopefully a fun summer. On the topic of online learning, the common theme I've heard is that it's definitely difficult to retain important information, but as a result, many teachers are very flexible and understanding, so it makes it a lot easier on students.
Great. And Alex, how do you balance the online learning when you're on Zoom versus when you're off Zoom and you're doing something in a class, maybe it's part Zoom and part not Zoom?
Um, I think like, it's a really smooth transition, like at least, because we kind of just jump on Zoom to like, get the class together, and then the teacher usually gives assignments, and then you do the assignment without the Zoom usually, and then you come back together on Zoom to check in. So I think it's pretty smooth.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Jerry. Go ahead.
No, I want to know what you're hearing about colleges. Are they in touch with the students? I know they had some, you know, last week, some students found out where they were admitted, but are they, what's the feeling in your group about how life is going to be in September or October when college starts?
Yeah, um, I know for like, me, I haven't heard anything specifically about what's going on with colleges. I think colleges are really taking their time to release any information, because it's kind of hard to see, you know, this is, I think, like four months forward. So like, we don't kind of, we don't know, right?
Thanks.
I have a question. So how are you finding it when you're doing group class work, when you've got a bunch of you on Zoom? How do you find that as opposed to being in a group in the classroom?
Um, I actually find it more organized, because the teacher can mute students, right? The teacher gets a voice, and then students can talk individually, do what they want. I mean, from my experience, everything has been really organized and calm, and I find that for group problems and stuff like that, it's actually really nice.
We're going to institute that the teachers can mute the students in the actual classrooms when we get back.
And Emily, how about you, Emily, in terms of the group kinds of meetings?
Um, so we actually use the breakout rooms in my physics class a lot, so that's helpful, because we'll do like a big worksheet in class, and she'll go over it and tell us to do certain problems, and we'll do the breakout room with the groups, and then we'll go back to the main classroom and go over it. And it's super easy for the teacher to just push us into the groups and then bring us right back, so we don't even have to figure out anything about it, that we just go right in, right out. It's super smooth.
Great, and how about the rest of your online learning? How's that been?
Okay, so, um, it's been good. Do you want me to read my speech?
Sure.
Okay. At the announcement of schools being closed for the rest of the year, the students are bummed, however, the spirits are still being kept high. With the weather getting nice, sports coaches, as you mentioned earlier, are still standing out workouts and trying to keep athletes happy and motivated during this time at home. As well as this, the parks having been recently opened has the town looking forward to new opportunities to get outside of the house while still staying safe. As far as the school for students, in the next couple of weeks, the AP testing will be administered through home tests. So all who are registered are studying hard and hoping for the best with this new format. As well as this, the announcement of the finals being canceled has students motivated to do well in the last market period to apply for that new heavier weighting scale for the students.
Great. Any other questions for Emily?
I have a question for Emily.
Go ahead, Dante.
You know, I think your group has been, you're a junior, so you've been disappointed by the fact that you haven't had an opportunity to visit some colleges. So what's the feedback? How are people deciding which college they're going to take? I mean, it's got to be different, so what's going?
Um, yeah, so I know that there's been a lot of virtual tours. Right now, the juniors are kind of filling out their junior questionnaires, getting all their recommendation emails out to their teachers so they can get their recommendation letters back. I think over the summer, most are hopeful that there will be a chance to go visit the colleges, but if there's not, I know that there's been a bunch of Zoom meetings and webinars that I've sat in for that are run by a bunch of the colleges, and they do specific ones based on that college or overall college experiences, and there's a lot more virtual tours. So I think people are leaning towards that to just kind of get a feel, and maybe they'll visit more next year when this starts opening up more.
And I'm assuming some of those sports events where you could show off your skills, those are an issue as well?
Um, yeah. So I actually am on club lacrosse team, and all of our summer tournaments are being pushed back as of now, some are canceling them. But mostly juniors by now, if you're getting recruited by that, were already being looked at. So hopefully, the people that needed the opportunity already got it, but if not, I think there's still opportunities for the fall if the sports go back. But that's what I know about the situation.
Great, Alex, Emily, thanks for joining. It's always good to hear from both of you as to how things are going. Let's move on to the superintendent's report. Melissa, I will turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. I think Mr. Reinstein covered it all with the community information. I am, we are so fortunate to have such a wonderful community. On Monday, Annie Young's friends and family lit luminaries on Columbia Field. It has been one year since this little girl passed. I didn't have the honor of knowing her, but I truly wish I did, and my condolences are with her friends and family. I realize that everyone is wanting to know what we are doing with all of our activities. We are working on creating some type of magic. Mr. Nixon has sent out his parent email with plans for, in addition to graduation, Mr. Geiger is having meetings to determine his next steps, and the elementary principals met this week to determine the ceremonies for their students. Buildings were closed just four short days ago, and I assure you, we are going to do something to make their experiences memorable. We just need you to be patient with us. We are working on it. This is, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. Our teachers are amazing, and I'm grateful to have the pleasure of working with such a professional and admirable group of teachers. I think we can all agree that our teaching staff has risen and gone well above all expectations during this time of remote learning. Teaching K through 12 is something that rarely happens remotely in a public school. These teachers took on the challenge, and they ran with it. So thank you for all that you do. Some of our teachers and educators are leaving us for retirement. While we can't have a reception for them like the tradition, I would like to read their names and their years of service. We have Mr. William Ayers. He was a teacher at Governor Livingston, and he was with the district for 17 years. Joanne Barton, a teacher at Woodruff, was with the district for 23. Laura Dorringer, Mary Kay McMillan, 35 years with the district. Ellen Massa, Hughes, 23 years. Frank Mirabella, District Transportation, 14 years. Catherine Parasol, a teacher at Hughes, for 25 years. Henry Rubin, District Transportation, 21 years. Louise Rochinsky, Cafeteria, Mary Kay McMillan, for 21 years. Dora Fedenja, Interpreter, Governor Livingston, 22 years. And Kathleen Watkins, a teacher at Woodruff, for 37 years. So we appreciate all of their service and the time they have spent with our children. And then, since I'm talking about teachers, this is our annual meeting where it is the tradition to honor our educators of the year. So I am going to start with Ms. Carol Scales. Carol Scales began her employment in the Berkeley Heights Public Schools in September of 1998, when she was hired as a paraprofessional in the Skip preschool disabilities class at the Early Childhood Center at Hamilton's Harris. She transitioned to a teaching position in January 2001 and served as an in-class support kindergarten teacher, then finally settled in her current role as a preschool teacher at Mary Kay McMillan. "When you enter Carol's classroom, you're immediately transported into a highly positive atmosphere of compassion, caring, and a sense of belonging," explained Annie Corleyhand, principal of the Early Childhood Center. "Her nurturing personality and creative approach to instruction fosters a love of learning and the development of positive relationships with all of her students. Carol is respected and loved by her colleagues, who describe her as a gentle spirit who is caring, patient, empathetic, and kind." Mrs. Scales, who was honored as Teacher of the Year at the Mary Kay McMillan School in 2005, 2006, earned her Bachelor of Science degree in Special Education from the University of Hartford. She served as a teacher at McCauley School for Exceptional Children in North Plainfield for seven and a half years before coming to Berkeley Heights. Ms. Corleyhand added, "As Christine Eckert, Carol's fellow preschool teacher, had says, 'If I was a preschooler, I would want Ms. Scales to be my first experience going to school.'" Outside of the classroom, Carol has served as a member of the District Council on Instruction and Science Curriculum Committee, as faculty representative to our school's PTO, and as a member of the Early Childhood Center Faculty Advisory Committee and Medical Emergency Response Team. So congratulations, Ms. Scales, as Educator of the Year for Mary Kay McMillan. And now I will turn it over to the PTO president of Mary Kay McMillan, who is Lisa Marie Katras.
Thank you, Dr. Varley. Mrs. Scales has been a beloved preschool teacher at Mary Kay, like you said, for 20 years. Anyone that has children can tell you that sending your three- or four-year-old to preschool for the first time can be tough for both the parent and the child. Mrs. Scales has a way of making school seem less scary and helping the child detach from the parent into a loving and safe environment. You know your child will have a fun day when you leave them with Mrs. Scales. Her devotion to early childhood education is easily seen through the creative ways she applies the curriculum while balancing play and childhood curiosity. Perhaps the most important lessons Mrs. Scales teaches our preschoolers are how to take care of each other and how to be kind. Her classroom is filled with love, understanding, sharing, and cooperation. The children thrive with the routine of the day, and they leave preschool prepared for the most important part of life, getting along with and respecting each other. I am personally so thankful that my children were lucky enough to have Mrs. Scales as their preschool teacher. It's my honor to present the Mary Kay McMillan Educator of the Year Award to Mrs. Carol Scales.
So, Ms. Scales, would you like to say a few words? And I forgot to introduce Jackie Bartlett, so I will turn it over to her after Ms. Scales gives her a little speech.
Okay, sure, you can all hear me, right? Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Katraski, for your kind words, and Dr. Varley also. So good evening, everyone. I hope that you are all well, and I would like to take this time to thank so many people, the Board of Education, Dr. Varley, Mrs. Corley for her kind words, the PTO, my colleagues, families, and students for allowing me this opportunity to be the Mary Kay McMillan School Educator of the Year, an honor that really means so much to me. I would especially like to thank the PTO for their generosity during this time. Also, I would like to thank all the former students that have reached out to me during the past month. I was very, very surprised to hear from them. When I began teaching at the Mary Kay McMillan School 20 years ago, I never imagined that I would be, sorry, be teaching in a remote manner. So it came with many challenges to me, but nothing that compares to a lot of other people. Everything about it is different. Teaching time is shortened, there is no physical connection to the children or one-on-one time with each child, no playground time, no daily accounts of their little lives, and no interaction with colleagues either. No block towers, playground, line leader, Band-Aids, or yogurt spills. Children coming to school in their pajamas with bowls of cereal and toast, and their siblings. Parents are now full-time teachers as well as everything else. It's all very new. But the constant in all of this, I find, is the love of shaping young minds and the enthusiasm the children bring each day. Their faces light up as they see their friends on Zoom and see their name being called for weather helper of the day. Laughs, smiles, and favorite toys can still be shared, and that is what makes up these special moments for right now. I want to thank all our families for their commitment to having their children ready each day to learn and grow as we navigate through this time. Remember that you are your child's first teacher, and you are being put to the test. It isn't an easy task, but you're doing it. And so for that reason, you all get an A+. I look forward to the day when we can all be together again at Mary Kay McMillan School. I wish you all well. Thank you for this honor. Good night.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Bartlett, I do apologize. I forgot to introduce you first. If you want to talk?
Sure, thank you. So good evening, everyone. It's with great pleasure that I speak to you this evening. Ms. Acosta, Educator of the Year Committee co-chair regrets that she can't join us on this special night, but I just wanted to take a moment to let everyone know about the process for choosing the Educator of the Year. So as educators, we all look to inspire and make a difference in the lives of children. We strive to establish a productive classroom climate and rapport with students while keeping up with current trends and strategies that are most effective for their learning. Tonight, we honor and celebrate educators who have made lasting impressions on the lives of their students, parents, and colleagues. In January, letters were sent and posted inviting parents, students, staff members, and committee members to select nominees they felt best exhibited the qualities of an educator of the year. In nominating this year's candidates, we sought teachers who demonstrated highly effective engagements with their students, dedicated service to their school and community, and demonstrated significant commitment to their own professional growth as lifelong learners. Additionally, we, the administration, considered the evaluation piece and incorporated it into the process when choosing our recipients. Based on those nominations, a committee comprised of prior educators of the year, members of the PTO, and a board member met to complete the silent voting selection process. Ballots were counted, and our 2019, 2020 educators of the year were selected. Due to the school closures and social distancing rules, we had to replace the usual surprise visits to classrooms to announce this year's recipients for surprise Zoom meetings and postings to Google Classroom. While these announcements were a little different this year, they were no less special. Students excitedly posted congratulatory messages to their teachers on Google Classroom, and colleagues were able to virtually share in this special moment with each educator. Educators of the Year, Steve Bonasfina, Jen Fisher, Stephanie Parrott, Stacy Sarve, Carol Scales, and Bob Seeger, we thank you for your dedication to the students and families of Berkeley Heights. Tonight, we celebrate you. Congratulations. Now I'll turn it back to Dr. Varley as she continues to introduce the honorees.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bartlett. I appreciate that. That was great. So we're going to start with now Ms. Stephanie Parrott with William Woodruff School. Stephanie Parrott has been a member of the faculty at William Woodruff School since November of 2013, when she was hired as a substitute replacement grade-three teacher. She taught third grade until finally moving to her current assignment, grade two, for the 2018, 2019 year. "Ms. Parrott is an affable, passionate educator who makes learning exciting, interesting, and highly engaging," said Ms. Gasparini, principal of William Woodruff School. "She is always searching for that one approach, strategy, or method that will open the door for each of her students to learn. Stephanie knows each of her students well and recognizes their abundance of energy. She answers the call with creative and highly interactive activities, quick-moving checks for understanding, and partner group work, along with a sprinkling of mindful strategies." Ms. Parrott earned her Bachelor of Science degree in Elementary Education from Cootstown University. She was employed as a first-grade teacher in the Garwood Public Schools for one and a half years prior to her arrival in Berkeley Heights. Ms. Parrott is always looking ahead to plan the next lesson, brainstorm a new activity, develop a STEM experience, or discuss specific needs approaches for her students. She is a team player who always steps up when needed. "Stephanie is an outstanding educator, and all of the Woodruff community is proud to celebrate her," says Ms. Gasparini. Outside of the classroom, Stephanie contributes a great deal to the Woodruff School community, having served as faculty advisor to the Woodruff School Computer Club, Safety Patrol, Student Council, Happy Feet Club, and as a member of the Council on Instruction and Grade One through Five Language Arts Committee. Congratulations, Ms. Parrott, as Educator of the Year. I will now turn it over to Jennifer Fay, so she can say a few words about Ms. Parrott. I will now turn it over to Jennifer Fay, so she can say a few words about Ms. Parrott.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Woodruff families, we would like to congratulate Ms. Stephanie Parrott on being named Woodruff's Educator of the Year. The students and families miss you, Ms. Parrott, and are sending you virtual high fives and fist pumps tonight. Ms. Parrott is a dedicated teacher who greets her students with a smile and kind heart each day. She's an active Woodruff community member. She serves as the advisor for the Safety Patrol, After-School Computer Club, and this year, a co-advisor to the Student Council. Woodruff is grateful to have Ms. Parrott. Thank you for giving a hoop, Ms. Parrott. We hope to celebrate you in person in the near future. Congratulations again. Thank you.
And now, Ms. Yay, Ms. Parrott, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Good evening, Dr. Varley, Mr. McKinney, members of the Board of Education, family, friends, and my fellow Educators of the Year. It is a great honor to be here with you this evening as the Educator of the Year for William Woodruff Elementary School. The 2018-2020 school year has seen many challenges, ones that I thought I'd never see as an educator, and has made me reflect on my career. I thought back on the beginning of my teaching career at a time when most of us do our great profound thinking in the middle of the night. I was 18 in a senior high school, and everyone around me seemed to know exactly what they wanted to do with the rest of their life. I, on the other hand, had no clue and was in a complete panic mode. I entered college with an undeclared major and decided to take an intro into education class to see if it would pique my interest. I sat in the back and waited for the professor to begin. He walked in, and his first question to the class was, "Why do you want to be a teacher?" Everyone's hands shot up and were ready to answer. Once again, I was embarrassed, for I didn't even know if I wanted to be a teacher, let alone a reason it would be a career choice for me. He allowed many to share their answers and then shared his thoughts with his class. He explained that the question was one where we shouldn't have a definite answer for. It would be one that would constantly change as we moved along. He emphasized that a good educator will constantly reflect and question why they are making the choices they do for their class and for themselves on a daily basis. I had absolutely no idea what he meant at the time, but throughout the years, I had continuously asked myself that very question. Why do I want to be a teacher? My answer for this question has changed many times. At the beginning, my answer would have been to have summers off. Years later, my response was that I never wanted to grow up. I got to enjoy Halloween and dress up with my students, celebrate the tooth fairy coming to visit, and play games with my class while my friends were sitting in a cubicle and filling out paperwork. Now, during this uncertain time, I once again ask myself the big question, "Why do I want to be a teacher?" The answer is an easy one to find this time around. Every time I meet a new person and they ask me what I do, I tell them, "I'm a teacher." They almost always respond by telling me a story about an educator they had throughout their schooling career that had an impact on their life. How cool is that, to have adults recall stories about their educators they had a long, long time ago? Over the years, I have been given the honor to be a small part of hundreds of students' lives and help them grow into amazing and talented people, some of which may remember some little rhyme or trick that I taught them to recall addition facts or the cardinal directions. What an amazing gift to be given. I want to thank my family for their constant support throughout the years. I've put them to work, whether it was cutting out shapes for crafts or coming in during the summer to help me prepare my classroom for a new school year. I also want to thank everyone from my William Woodruff family. We truly are a team and help each other out without thinking twice, especially my 2nd, 3rd-grade teachers, who always share ideas, resources, and most importantly, kindness. And finally, thank you to our principal, Ms. Gasparini, for your constant support and leadership. It is a privilege to be a teacher, and working in a community like Berkeley Heights, where there's tons of support, makes it even better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was great. Thank you. Now, we will turn to Ms. Stacy Sarave at Mountain Park. Stacy Sarave began her second career teaching in January 2005 as a substitute replacement Grade II teacher at Mountain Park. She has been at Mountain Park ever since, teaching 2nd grade before finally moving primarily to Grade 5. "As a Science and Social Studies rotation teacher in 5th grade, Ms. Sarave's love of history and all things quirky shines through in every lesson," explained Mr. Mariso, Principal of Mountain Park School. Thanks to a Berkeley Heights Education Foundation grant, she often dresses in period-specific costumes as she helps her students not only learn, but experience American history. It is highly possible to see her teach a lesson on the Declaration of Independence dressed as Thomas Jefferson. Ms. Sarave earned her Bachelor of Arts degree in History from Harvard University, and she received her Juris Doctorate degree from Harvard Law School. After working for an attorney for nearly five years and raising her two sons, Stacy headed back to school, completing her teacher certification coursework and student teaching experience through Kane University. Ms. Sarave, who was recognized as Teacher of the Year at Mountain Park School in both 2008, 2007, 2008, and 2013 and 2014, is an outstanding contributor to the Berkeley Heights Public Schools community outside of the classroom as well. She serves as a member of the K-5 Social Studies Curriculum Committee, the Mountain Park School Safety Team, the Skip Committee, and the District-wide Affirmative Action Committee. Thank you so much, Ms. Sarave, for all of your hard work. Congratulations. I'll now turn it over to Katie D'Angelo, who is the Mountain Park PTO President, so she can say a few words.
Thank you. On behalf of the PTO, I want to congratulate Mrs. Sarave for being selected Educator of the Year. She's a 5th-grade teacher who demonstrates excellence in so many ways. I feel lucky to have known Mrs. Sarave for the last few years. She never fails to ask how my daughter is doing after being in her class a couple of years ago, and she always seems to be trying to stay connected to her students in general. Mrs. Sarave is a gifted teacher whose classroom is a joy-filled and fun place to be. Her students are always engaged in her unique lessons. Her gentle encouragement pushes students to continuously strive for their best. All of these things make her terrific at preparing her students for middle school. And maybe best of all, she always has a smile and a kind word for people she meets. I'm delighted to congratulate Mrs. Sarave on this award.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sarave, would you like to say a few words?
By saying that I hope all of you and your families are well, and my thoughts are with anyone in our community who has been struggling in this time of COVID-19. Really, what I want to do is express my gratitude for this lovely honor. First, I want to thank my wonderful 5th-grade team, who in my eyes are all Educators of the Year, Carla Gamba, Scott Rayner, Eli Quinones, and of course, my terrific co-teacher, Lee Gillespie. I also want to thank my very supportive principal, John Mariso, and all my colleagues at Mountain Park. They are the best. I'd like to give a shout-out to my husband, who has very patiently put up with my multiple historical personalities during remote learning. I unintentionally scared him the other day when I approached him from behind dressed as Ben Franklin. He's a trooper. Finally, I want to thank all my students. Teaching you gives my life such a happy purpose. You are why I love coming to school each day, or even zooming into your house during remote learning. I look forward to a time when we can see each other again in person. Thank you so much for this honor.
Thank you so much. That was great. I would love to have seen the Ben Franklin episode. And now, Ms. Jennifer Fisher at Thomas P. Hughes. Jennifer Fisher started her employment in the Berkeley Heights Public Schools in June of 2014 as a paraprofessional in our District Extended School Year Program. That September, Ms. Fisher accepted a combined position as a paraprofessional and teacher of Special Education at Hughes School, a job she filled for the duration of the 2014-2015 school year. Jen was finally hired as a full-time teacher of Special Education at Hughes in September of 2015, a role in which she has served for the past five years. "I knew that Jen Fisher was a rock star teacher from the moment we hired her, but that fact has become even more evident with our current remote learning situation," explained Jessica Nardi, Principal of Thomas P. Hughes School. "Ms. Fisher goes way, way, way above all expectations to keep her students motivated and engaged in their learning. She has been a strong collaborator with her 5th-grade teammates and is always a strong advocate for her students' needs. Jen never ceases to amaze me with her innovative ideas and her commitment to student success. I am proud to be her colleague." Ms. Fisher worked in the private sector as a member relations manager, account manager, and a corporate trainer for eight years before transitioning to the field of education, serving as a substitute teacher in the Kennelworth, Morris, and Westfield School Districts prior to her arrival in Berkeley Heights. Jen earned her Bachelor of Science degree in Hospitality Management from the Pennsylvania State University, and she received her Master of Arts degree in Education from the College of St. Elizabeth. Jen contributes to the district outside of the classroom as a member of the Council on Instruction and Technology Advisory Board, and she serves as a CPR AED certified volunteer. Last year, Ms. Fisher was among a select group of Central Jersey educators honored as Teachers Who Make Magic by radio station WCTC AM. Congratulations, Ms. Fisher, on being Educator of the Year for Thomas P. Hughes School. And now, we will have Dana Vandenbrand, the Hughes PTO President, discuss Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. I'm honored to congratulate Mrs. Fisher on behalf of the PTO for being Hughes Educator of the Year. Mrs. Fisher is warm, funny, engaging, and responsive. It's a rare thing for 5th graders to be excited for school, but she manages to do just that. We at Hughes are so lucky to have her, and on behalf of the PTO, we just want to congratulate Mrs. Fisher. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Ms. Fisher, do you have a few words?
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Good evening. I consider it to be such an honor to be nominated with this group of talented fellow teachers. Congratulations to all of you. While this may not be a traditional setting, I am so grateful to the Berkeley Heights Board of Education and Dr. Varley for making this recognition possible, so thank you so much. This unprecedented time has given us all the space to reflect on what is really important to each of us, and I am so proud to be a teacher, especially now. As Dr. Varley indicated, teaching is my second career, and I got here on a roundabout route that included earning my master's nights and weekends while raising my children at home. I'll forever be grateful to Michelle Gardner for giving me a chance, a totally green teacher, in summer school, no less, to prove myself as a future educator in Berkeley Heights. Her unwavering trust gave me the confidence in myself that I needed, that I could do this thing called teaching, so I'm forever grateful. To Jessica, thank you for your friendship, your trust, and your ability to make Hughes a place that I want to go to each and every day. A principal sets the tone for a school community, and she sets a tone of kindness, compassion, and sparkle. From an urgent phone call in July years ago, Jen, call me, I have a spot for the fall, to when you called me about this unbelievable honor and all the sometimes fun, sometimes difficult calls in between, Jess, I will always answer, so thank you so much. A school community is different than just a school building. At Hughes, we are a community of students and staff that work each day to educate and to lead by kindness. I will never be able to thank my fellow coworkers at Hughes enough for their support and their friendship. Thank you all for your understanding when I fumbled at the beginning and when I still fumble. To my fellow 5th-grade teachers, including the absolute best co-teacher I could ever have asked for, Ellen Massa, this award is for all of you, and I thank you for your partnership to help make our 5th-grade team shine. I think it would be absolutely impossible to accept this award without acknowledging my absolute favorite part of my teaching position, which is getting to know so many Berkeley Heights students and their families. The students put a smile on my face every single day, and I cannot even explain how much I miss them right now. Every year in September, I feel like I hit the jackpot when I meet my new class. A special thank you to the families in Berkeley Heights for always being so supportive partners in educating your children, especially now. It is not easy. And finally, I'd like to thank my family, my husband Brett and my three kids, Zachary, Noah, and Kate. You all are the reason I get to go to Hughes and do what I love each and every day and live out my dream of being a teacher. Thank you for being my biggest fans, from helping to set up the classroom each August, even recording silly TikToks with me since we've been home, so I can post them for my class and cheer my students up a little bit during this remote learning. Thank you for understanding that my heart is big enough for all of you, as well as my students at Hughes. I am grateful and humbled by this honor, and I look forward to many more years of teaching in the Berkeley Heights community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Next, we have Mr. Steve Bonasbina, who is from Columbia Middle School. After having worked at Deerfield School in Mountainside for just over a year as a long-term substitute teacher and paraprofessional, Stephen Bonasbina was hired as a teacher of Social Studies at Governor Livingston High School in September of 2007. Mr. Bonasbina taught a variety of courses during his 10 years at GL, including Grade 9 Global Studies Honors, Project Connect World History, World History and Cultures Honors, Holocaust and Genocide, Introduction to Economics, and Contemporary American Honors. He moved to Columbia Middle School prior to the 2017-2018, where he has taught primarily Grade 7 Social Studies for the past three years. As his principal, my discussions with Mr. Bonasbina have always focused on him speaking more globally about how he wants his lessons to reach farther than just the facts of history and how he hopes to influence students into becoming better citizens, says Frank Geiger, Principal of Columbia Middle School. Steve has been described as innovative, caring, and creative, and the one who is loved by his students, by one of his fellow teachers. I believe Mr. Bonasbina is an excellent choice for our school's Educator of the Year. Mr. Bonasbina earned his Bachelor of Arts degree in History Secondary Education and his Master of Arts degree in Instruction and Curriculum, both from Kane University. Outside of this classroom, Steve has contributed to the instructional efforts through the school district as a member of the Council on Instruction, Professional Development Committee, Technology Advisory Board, and the School Improvement Panel. Steve Bonasbina's love for history plays out through every lesson he's teaching, and his love for teaching shows in the enthusiasm he brings to the classroom every single day, added Stephen Hopkins, District Supervisor of Social Studies and World Language. Mr. Bonasbina is the type of teacher who, by his example, ignites in his students the same passion for history that he holds himself. Congratulations, Mr. Bonasbina, as Educator of the Year for Columbia Middle School. And now, Mila Trigo, the CMS PTO President, will have a few words.
Hello. On behalf of the Columbia Middle School Parent Teacher Organization, I would like to congratulate Mr. Stephen Bonasbina, 7th-grade Social Studies teacher at Columbia Middle School. Mr. Bonasbina, also known as Mr. B. to his students, makes history come alive for all of his lucky students, including both of my children. Thank you, Mr. B., for your approachability, your creative teaching methods, and your great efforts to address the needs of all levels of students. It is my honor to present this year's Educator of the Year Award for the CMS Educator of the Year to Mr. Bonasbina.
Congratulations, Mr. Bonasbina. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please. Okay, thank you. I want to open by saying thank you to the board members of the community, the board members, the members of the community, the PTO and administrators present this evening, and my family for their love. I further want to thank my fellow staff for performing and delivering exceptional educational quality in this time of uncertainty. You are all the best. I have had the honor of teaching many hundreds of students in this district, beginning in 2007, 2008. An award such as this is only achieved through the dedication of an entire community. I have been fortunate to be a team member on this extraordinary journey. I also want to highlight that I have been able to work with strong, dedicated staffs of both Governor Livingston and Columbia Middle. Our administrators, Mr. Robert Nixon, Ms. Tara Olivera, Mr. Frank Geiger, and Ms. Grace Acosta in both buildings, who allow for creativity and professional autonomy, without which much of my own accomplishments could not be achieved. I thank you all. Further, I wish to thank the members of Mountainside School District, particularly Mr. Robert Burkhart and my cooperating teacher from my internship from my college years, Ms. Colleen Giolinella, the current principal at the Academy for Information Technology in Scotch Plains. Other people I would like to say thank you to are Mrs. Judy Radnor, our former superintendent, Mrs. Pat Qualsche, former Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Varley, our current superintendent, and Mr. Scott McKinney, our current Assistant Superintendent. To Mr. Stephen Hopkins for his calm and erudite leadership as my supervisor and Ms. Lori Scott. To Mr. Stephen Hopkins for his calm and erudite leadership as my supervisor and Ms. Lori Scott for taking a chance on me as a young candidate for hire, I thank you both deeply. To my mentor Sharon Leahy, a most gifted educator and my guide as a young teacher. To my coworkers in the Social Studies Department and to my Seventh Grade Team for truly inspired cooperation and execution of enlightened lessons. To the students past and present, know that Mr. B. loves all of you and will always be here for you. I dedicate this achievement to you all and thank you more than you will all know. Respectfully, have a blessed evening and remain safe and healthy throughout this time of crisis. I thank you all.
Thank you so much. Next, we will talk about Mr. Robert Seeger, who is our Governor Livingston High School Educator of the Year. He is another individual who came to the field of education as a second career. Bob Seeger arrived in the Berkeley Heights School District in February of 2012 as the District Student Assistance Counselor, working primarily at Governor Livingston and Columbia Middle for his role for the past eight years. Bob Seeger is such an important part of the culture at Governor Livingston, explained Robert Nixon, the school's principal. From his catchphrase, "Thanks for coming to school today," to his kind words of support and passing, the extent to which he cares about others is evident at all times. Mr. Seeger was a member of the Cranford Police Department for 30 years, serving with the Detective Borough, Juvenile Borough, Crime Prevention Unit, and as a dare officer and traffic investigator prior to his retirement from the CFD in 2004. He earned his Bachelor of Science degree in Human Services from Thomas Edison State University and completed his certification coursework through Kane University, which enabled him to transition to a new line of work as Student Assistance Counselor with the Cranford Public Schools. He was employed as his SAC in Cranford for six years prior to his arrival in Berkeley Heights. Known to all for his persistent smile and upbeat attitude, Bob's commitment to the health and well-being of the district's students is always on display. Through his coordination of informational programs and the impactful learning experiences, such as Days of Realization, or through the positive messaging he conveys as faculty advisor to Trend and Guitar Club at GLHS, our students know they have a caring and knowledgeable advocate in Mr. Seeger. Bob Seeger has built two careers around an internal value system that is inspiring to others, added Mr. Nixon. Mr. Seeger is a true original who does so many things to make our school a better place every day. Congratulations, Mr. Seeger, Educator of the Year for Governor Livingston High School. And now I'll turn it over to Debbie Knapp, who is the GL PTO President.
Thank you, Mrs. Varley. On behalf of the Governor Livingston PTO, I am thrilled to present the Governor's Livingston Educator of the Year Award to Mr. Robert Seeger. We thank you for all you do for the students and the wonderful clubs that you run, such as the Guitar Club and Trend. And as you say to the students every day, "Thank you for coming to school today," we would like to say to you a huge thank you for coming to school every day. Congratulations, Mr. Seeger.
Mr. Seeger, do you have a few words?
Yes. Let me see here. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Varley, Mr. McKinney, Mr. Nixon, Ms. Olivera, Mrs. Bartlett, Mr. Geiger, Mrs. Acosta, and the members of the Board of Education. It is indeed a great honor for me to be selected Governor Livingston High School's Educator of the Year. Definitely is a career highlight. There are so many individuals at Governor Livingston High School who are deserving of this award every year, which even makes it a bigger honor for me. I did not, however, earn this award by myself. I shared this with my teammates. First of all, my beautiful wife Ellen, 43 years, the members of our Governor Livingston High School Administration, our Guidance Department, my fellow faculty members, and Mrs. Nicolich and Mrs. Morey, the coordinators of our Municipal Alliance Programs. My daily goal has always been to try to make a difference in the life of a child. For the past years that I've been at the Berkeley Heights School System, you have given me that opportunity to work with so many wonderful young people. I want to thank the members of my Trend Executive Board because these young people continue to be tremendous role models year after year and are our future leaders. And in closing, I want to thank Mrs. Moore. She works with me in guidance for being a great work partner and for nominating me for this awesome honor. Hopefully soon, I will be able to greet you once again at GL and at Columbia Middle School by saying, "Thanks for coming to school today. Be safe and thank you for all that you continue to do for our students. This is quite an honor and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much."
Thank you, Mr. Seeger. So that ends our Educator of the Year Ceremony. And we do appreciate all you do and we thank you for the gifts you give our children every day. And also, I will now turn it over to Ms. Felizola so she can introduce the next part of the superintendent's report.
Hey, Donna. Donna, before you just get into that, to Carol, Stephanie, Stacy, Jennifer, Steve, and Bob, on behalf of the board, we want to really thank all of you. This night's important, not just because you're Educator of the Year. I think we learn more about you from what we hear, from what your principals have said, from what your PTO presidents have said, and from what you've shared. So I think we get some insight into who you are as a person. And I think we always walk away with some pride in knowing a little bit more about you and why you were nominated as Educator of the Year. And some of you multiple times, which is even better. Unfortunately, we'd like to be able to shake your hand like we usually do and give you the plaque with the apple, which I always smile when we give that out each year. But we're in different times, so we'll do it over Zoom. But you have our heartfelt appreciation, acknowledgement for all the work you've done and for all the students' lives you impacted. So on behalf of the board, a heartfelt thank you for everything you do for our students. Okay, as Donna introduces our next person, we'll say thank you to all of our PTO presidents. And Henri, you're more than welcome to stay, but we're going to demote you from the panelist part of the presentation. Donna, go ahead.
Okay. Every year, the board is required to go through ethics training. And tonight, we have our board attorney, Mr. Vito Gagliardi, who will address ethics training for the board members. He will talk about current topics and then some specific topics that have been brought that the board had questions about. And he will give us some clarification on those issues. So, Vito, we're happy to have you here tonight and looking forward to what you have to tell us.
Thanks very much. Hello, everybody. Kind of tough to follow those educators you just had. That was a tremendous presentation. So congratulations to everybody. So we'll move from that glorious high to this tedious low, but I'll try to make it as interesting as possible. I'll go over the School Ethics Act, go over a couple of examples where other boards, not as well-run as yours, fall short of what the Ethics Act requires and see if we can learn from that. And then the two areas that I understood from Donna would be of interest. We'll go over in some detail what is appropriate for executive session. And then we'll go over and discuss, I think it's better if it's interactive, what it is that you are permissible to reveal to the public during the course of collective bargaining negotiations without running afoul of the perk dictates or related case law. So as to the School Ethics Act. So as I do traditionally with you, I don't spend time on the original School Ethics Act because there's really nothing very confusing about insisting that the superintendent hire a relative or taking lunch money. You know that's unethical, some of it may be criminal, and you know that you shouldn't do it. So the School Ethics Act per se doesn't lead to a lot of case law, doesn't lead to a lot of problems because its prescriptions are very clear. It's the amendment to the School Ethics Act, which came about 10 years later, that is the source of well over 90% of all of the disputes brought before the School Ethics Committee. And it's this section that was an aspirational list of suggestions from school boards that became statute that I want to spend a little time on. So it reads like a prescription from school boards because that's what it was, right? "I will uphold and enforce all the laws, rules, and regulations. I will make decisions based upon what's best for children. I will confine board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal." Basically, those are the type of aspirational things that you now find yourself obligated to do. Those three that I described and the fourth one, it's your responsibility not to administer the schools, but to see that they are well-run. All of them prevent you from getting involved in the day-to-day operations of the district, which are the province of the superintendent of schools and all those who report to the superintendent. I'll go over some examples from case law in a second. This section also requires that you recognize that any authority you have rests with the board, not with any one of you. So the superintendent, for example, doesn't report to nine people, she reports to one body. And so it would be difficult for superintendents around the state, five, seven, nine members. It would be impossible because there are times when board members, get ready, don't always agree on everything. So you can't put the superintendent or anyone else in the position of having conflicting obligations. There's only one and it emanates from the board. And no individual board member between meetings via email, et cetera, can countermand decisions made by the board. You're not supposed to surrender your independent judgment to special interests. Basically, it means don't do anyone a favor, but act in what you think is in the district's best interest because you can't surrender your independent judgment to anyone else. Next, you are obligated to hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which you obtain in your capacity as a board member. Some of those confidences are things that come to you because you are a board member. You learn certain things about personnel, you learn certain things about students. And those are things which, as a matter of the ethics laws, you can't disclose. And in some cases, actually, other laws would be impacted if you did. So those are things that you learn because you're board members. Then there are other confidences that are created by board members, the most obvious being the subject of executive session discussions. So those are in executive session for a reason. We'll go over what those reasons are in a second. You must maintain those confidences or run afoul of the school ethics laws. You are obligated to vote for the best qualified personnel available after considering the superintendent's recommendation. So again, your role in hiring is limited. The superintendent makes a recommendation, you can vote it up or vote it down, but you're not in any way permitted to suggest to the superintendent, you know, "I really might like this other person over here." In your appointing the best qualified personnel, it's the only time as board members that you are ethically entitled to have access to personnel records. Normally, your access to personnel records is either flatly prohibited or limited to a matter that comes before you. For example, if tenure charges are being certified, the evidence that supports those charges, often letters of reprimand, annual summative evaluations, et cetera, they're attached to the charges. You obviously are entitled, you're actually required to review them. But otherwise, personnel files are off limits to you. This one exception comes when you are taking an action via the superintendent's recommendation. So if someone is being recommended for a promotion from classroom teacher to vice principal or vice principal to principal, you are entitled, under those limited circumstances, to review their evaluations. This is obviously awkward in the era of COVID-19. I would never suggest that a client send an email or send copies of someone's personnel records. They're in a conference room somewhere, the superintendent says they'll be available Tuesday and Wednesday afternoon. You go in, you review them to your heart's content, and you leave. You don't get copies of them. But under those circumstances, you are entitled to access to personnel records. Otherwise, you simply are not. You are required to support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. I would say that really means two things. Respect the chain of command, that is, your actions with the personnel come through the superintendent, with the exception of Ms. Felizola. And it also means that you should follow the chain of command and respect it. I.e., if you know there's a problem in a school because a family member or a neighbor let you know about it, were you to bring that to the attention of the principal, you'd be violating the School Ethics Act. Those should be brought only to the attention of the chief school administrator. The last provision in this section of the School Ethics Act, all complaints must go to the chief school administrator. So no matter how well you know the principal because your kids went to that school, no matter how innocuous that you think the issue is, no matter how helpful you're trying to be, there is absolutely no question. Concerns, however well-meaning they may be, must be brought to the chief school administrator for the chief school administrator to act on those matters. And only becomes a matter for the board after the chief school administrator has acted or failed to act, but not any other time. So that's a review of the School Ethics Act as we're required to do annually. I just wanted to go over two cases with you because they illustrate, I think, the ease with which board members can unwittingly get into trouble. The cases seem very similar. One board member was found to have violated the School Ethics Act and one was not. So I just wanted to spend a little time on that. Both these cases involve board members who were somehow active in the schools. Very often, people come to a board of education because they have been active in the schools on behalf of their children, maybe they've been involved in the PTA. So they're used to being in and around schools before they become board members. So here are the two cases. So we have a situation where the board's food service contract is expiring. And so it's going to be voted on at an upcoming board meeting. There is a board member who is against reviewing the contract and enters the schools, properly signing in, wearing a badge, but without particularly informing the principal or superintendent, and goes into the school's kitchen and takes pictures because one of the complaints that the board member heard of was that the kitchen area was unsanitary and wanted to take pictures of it and does so. Then, without telling the superintendent or informing the board, the board member winds up being interviewed both on local TV and by a local newspaper, showing the pictures taken and expressing dissatisfaction with the food service provider. Question, is anything that I just described in violation of the School Ethics Act?
It certainly appear that it is.
What do you think this board member did wrong, sir?
It certainly seems to me like he is involved in managing the school rather than being, make sure the school is well-run.
So I agree with you, the specific violation, there was a violation. The violation was under the section that requires any issues be brought to the superintendent of schools rather than the local newspaper. So it wasn't a violation to go in the kitchen. The kitchen wasn't locked. The board member didn't ask for any special permission. Literally, any individual who was properly in the building, and this individual was, they checked in, could have gone into the kitchen and take pictures. That was okay. But instead of bringing the issue to the superintendent and saying, "Hey, before we go forward with that recommendation, I want you to see what I saw. Here are some pictures." The person went on TV and brought complaints to the press rather than the superintendent. And as a result, was found to have committed a violation. Different case. I'm going to ask the same question. What actions, if any, violated the School Ethics Act here? So we have a board member who emails the board president asking questions about an upcoming expenditure for $350,000 for the district's robotics room. The individual in seeking information through the board president copies the entire board, the district employee involved in the program, and simply asks for information. There's a second email the board member sends to the board president. And the, I'm sorry, this is a community member, not a board member, sends an email to the board president. The board president receives a complaint about the superintendent's performance. The board president does not investigate the allegations, but instead forwards the email to the superintendent seeking a response to this community member's concerns. The community member, dissatisfied, brings an ethics complaint saying that the board president's handling of the inquiry as to the robotics room and the board president's failure to investigate the and the board president's failure to investigate the allegations made about the superintendent were not ethical. Question here is, in responding to the information request about the robotics room and/or not investigating the superintendent's performance as it relates to another issue, did the board president commit any violations and if so, what were they?
It sounds appropriate. What, he asked for an explanation from the superintendent, correct?
Correct.
And presumably, he got one.
Presumably, correct.
If he was satisfied with the explanation, I wouldn't have thought this was a violation.
There is nothing here that was a violation. So the board member sought and obtained information from the superintendent. The board member not only has no obligation to quote unquote, conduct an investigation beyond any of this, it would be inappropriate if the board president did so. So the community members' ethics complaints were all rejected. So hopefully, since these are not uncommon issues where you seek information, you discuss information, you distribute information. There's nothing wrong with that if you work through the superintendent, if you follow the chain of command. And if you don't step outside of your role as policymakers, you deserve to be informed. So getting information is one thing, distributing information is something else entirely. Any questions about the School Ethics Act before I move to the Open Public Meetings Act? Okay.
All right. Yes. What if the response from the superintendent was deemed to be unresponsive or the board president didn't accept the response? Particularly, I'm thinking, you know, in the case where there were fraud allegations. So the allegations are brought to the superintendent, you and your team have been accused of fraud. So you're saying the first place to go is to the superintendent. So what are the board's courses of actions if they want to pursue an investigation, say if it was something as serious as fraud? Or if they were not, if they didn't accept the response, they didn't feel the response from the superintendent in the case that you had cited, where Bill said presumably it was a favorable response. If it wasn't, what would the course of action be for the board?
I'm going to, I'm going to take your question and break it into two parts. One is that the response was either unsatisfactory or yeah, or was not provided. And then the second is if the allegations rose to the level of fraud, so I'll break them into two. If in the first case, the superintendent declines to provide any information or would only provide a fraction of the information, my advice to the board president there would be, bring this to the board. The board could pass a resolution requiring this. The superintendent then has to choose between providing the information or being insubordinate because it's the board to whom the superintendent reports, not to the board president or any individuals. So we have to go back to following the process and the processes for the board to handle the matter, not just the board president. If the allegations were as serious as fraud, whether it involves the superintendent or anyone else, the appropriate course of action is law enforcement. Because you're talking about mishandling of a contract or public monies, you shouldn't be investigating that at all. So that's why I wanted to separate that as something entirely different.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions as it relates to your role under the School Ethics Act? Okay. Donna, did everybody get a copy of this summary I circulated this afternoon?
Yes, we did.
So what I just wanted to do was go over with you the actual reasons why you can go into executive session and to make sure that when you did so, you were as precise as the law requires. A lot of boards have a general understanding of the reasons you can go into executive session. But if challenged, and we know there are people who do this literally for a living with Open Public Meetings Act or Open Public Records Acts disputes that go to court. There are attorney's fees that can be shifted if they're successful. So it's not simply enough to know what the exceptions to go into executive session are, but know how to express them and use them judiciously. So the first three allow you to go into executive session. If essentially confidentiality is required by law. If discussion would jeopardize federal funding. Got to be honest, in 30 years, I've never had anybody make a motion to go into executive session to avoid jeopardizing federal funding. And then the third is if there would be an unwarranted invasion of an individual's privacy. I'm lumping these together because I think that if you routinely violated students' rights under the federal laws which protect special education students, you might suffer a loss of federal aid. So I think all three of these lumped together are the reason why you not only can, but absolutely should go into executive session. Whenever you're discussing anything related to a student's program, student's health issue, student disciplinary matter, those are easy ones, but the specific rationale for going into executive session are those set forth in items one through three. Item four, discussions regarding union negotiations. Let me just stop there for a second. So you understand and have done the very simple act of going into executive session to discuss quote unquote, contract negotiations. I don't know if that's typically the way you say it. There certainly have been disputes that that is impermissively vague. And so if you're going to discuss the collective bargaining negotiations with the BHEA, that's what your motion should say, not simply contract negotiations. Because the phrase contract negotiations isn't really found there the way you mean it. When you say it, contract negotiations are if you are negotiating a contract with, let's say, the purchaser of land, for example, and you want to go into executive session to discuss that with your attorney. But when you're talking about collective bargaining, that's what you should say. There have been cases where judges have encouraged, and not just trial judges, but up to the Supreme Court, encourage public bodies to be as specific as possible without violating the reason for confidentiality. You're not violating confidentiality if you say you're going into executive session to discuss the negotiations with the BHEA. And so rather than be accused of being vaguer than you need to be, my suggestion is you just be specific. There's nothing odd or informative about your saying what collective bargaining discussions are being discussed in executive session. Number five, anything involving the purchase, lease or acquisition of property. Obviously, if you're discussing public what you're willing to pay for something, it's a pretty good way to find the seller to find useful information. So that's very clear cut. And you don't have to be specific there because if you're discussing property, you may tip your hand and put yourself in a disadvantageous position. Item six, issues relating to safety. And I think this is sort of taken on some nuance in recent years as school safety has become such an unfortunate focus. We actually litigated on your behalf, you may recall, an issue as it relates to the Open Public Records Act, what it means to have confidences that pertain to student safety. You might recall that WNBC sent out a number of increased dozens of them, Berkeley Heights was one. And one of the things they wanted to know is what was the schedule for your fire drills? And we took the position that if they knew that every Tuesday, students were going to be marching out of buildings in single file, someone who wanted to do them harm would have a very easy opportunity to do so. In fact, our school safety team at Porzio really hates the ideas of marching the students out in single file, having them standing there on a sidewalk. Because it's so easy for someone to call and bomb scare, know the schools are going to be empty. Could do a lot of harm to a lot of children in a very short period of time. So this one, I think, has been read very expansively as our world has gotten more and more unpleasant. So certainly, any discussions that relate in any way to student safety or student safety programs have been much more closely guarded by the courts as it relates to Open Public Meeting Act discussions and Open Public Records Act requests. And our objection there was successful, you did not have to turn that over to WNBC. Let's talk about the interactions with the board attorney. Obviously, a very near and dear issue for me. But a lot of boards will simply, when they make their motion to go into executive session, will say something like, legal matters. That is insufficient and should not be the motion that you make to go into executive session. Your legal issues essentially come in four categories. There's pending litigation, there's anticipated litigation, there's contract negotiations, as I described to you a few moments ago. And then there are matters which you must discuss with your attorney in executive session in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. So if you make a motion to go into executive session to talk to counsel, it should be one of those four. If you were to say legal matters and someone were to challenge you, you would lose that challenge, that is impermissibly vague. So please use one of those four. Item eight, appointment, employment termination, terms and conditions of employment, all of the personnel exceptions that you're quite familiar with. So the issue with this is not whether or not to go into executive session, but how to use the requirements of the rice letter. So I want to talk about that for a second. Tricky question, anybody know where the term rice letter comes from?
Yeah, it comes from, it comes from our regional district from the late 90s.
Yes, Regina Rice, I actually met her when we went through dissolution, she had to go through the staff selection process. I was so excited to meet her, but that shows that I have a sort of sad life. But yes, she was a teacher at Jonathan Dayton. So what's the issue there? The issue was one of fundamental fairness that a court had to wrestle with. So you had the right to discuss, as you as a school board have the right to discuss personnel in executive session. The courts have found that you have a property right in your employment. And the issue was, could a property right be infringed without due process? What's due process? Anybody want to try that one?
Instead, giving the person the opportunity to say their piece?
I got to give you partial credit on that one, Donna, yes. So I'm turning you all into constitutional scholars. Whenever you hear the phrase due process, our courts have said it means simply notice and an opportunity to be heard. That's due process. You're a public body, so not unlike folks who go through the criminal justice system, you too are obligated to provide due process. It's guaranteed by the Constitution. You can't deny someone due process. So that's what the court wrestled with. You have the right to talk in executive session about a personnel matter, but this person has a right to due process. So what does that mean? That means that the person is told in advance in writing, we're going to be talking about something that could affect the status of your employment. Not generally, how do we feel about class sizes, do we have too many second grade teachers? But specific individuals or an individual that their employment could be affected and you want to discuss that in executive session. That employee has the right to say to you, I want you to discuss that in public. Why? Because I'm a popular coach or band director or principal or what have you. And I want to have people come out in droves and say that you're horrible humans for even having this discussion and don't you dare take that recommendation from the superintendent and vote on it. That's due process, that's America, right? So the court's balancing act was, we're not going to tell you, you can't discuss it in executive session, statute clearly permits that. We are going to say that the employee's due process rights trump your right to discuss it in executive session if the employee objects. You have the same discussion you want, although it won't be the same discussion, we all know that, but it will be in public. Now, the employee takes a bit of a risk there, right? Because if the superintendent was going to say to you, I don't want to renew this person, they've been here for three years, they're an absolute disaster, let me go over their evaluations. Normally, the superintendent could not do that in public. Now the superintendent could do that in public. So there's sort of a balancing act the employee has to undergo. Do I want this discussed in public or not? So that I can be present and I can have not just my own assertion of my rights, but I can have the citizen's way and I want my rights are. So that's what basically you are inviting every time you send out a rice letter. You're inviting that employee to exercise their due process rights. So that's why the decision is a very careful one. Is this discussion a general discussion, we're going to have an executive session? Or is it a discussion which could lead to some, the terms and conditions of someone's employment being impacted? In which case, I've got to give them an opportunity to be heard when the superintendent makes this recommendation before we take it out in public for a vote. The last item here, deliberations that may result in the imposition of a civil penalty. The only one I can think of there is, let's say, if there was a spill of petroleum or something on one of your properties, you could be fined by the DEP. Could you discuss that in an executive session before you were subjected to that? Fine, you could, but you'd almost always be discussing that with counsel anyway. So that's usually subsumed under something you're going to discuss with your attorney, subject to the attorney-client privilege. So again, those categories are very precise. Hopefully, I provided a little clarity, but most importantly, I think, is making sure that you take the proper motions when you go into executive session and exercise your statutory rights to have a private discussion on one of these topics. So before I transition to the final subject for tonight, let me see if you have any questions.
Is the guidance on being more explicit about negotiations new? Because we have always, well, always, in the time period that I've been on the board, we've always just had an item on the, on the agenda in the section for returning to executive session that just says negotiations during meetings that we discuss contract, teacher contract negotiations or admin contract negotiations or any of the bargaining unit negotiations.
There have been trial courts which, you know, sort of come out both ways on these issues in terms of how specific you need to be. You may remember a case, though, that went to the Supreme Court only about two years ago, I think it involved Kane University, where there was an allegation that they were misusing executive session and the appellate division completely overreacted and said, you can't have executive sessions unless you do this and it's got to be no more than this time, you can't have it at the beginning of the meeting. You have to have your minutes that come out in, you know, in a week or something, just laid down a whole host of impossibilities. When the Supreme Court got the case, it reversed the appellate division's completely unworkable scheme. But in that decision, gently admonished school districts and all public bodies to be as precise as possible without giving away the reason you're going into executive session and the confidentiality that goes with it. So I think that, I wouldn't say there's anything specifically new, Bill, but I would say that all public bodies, you know, sort of had a moment when the Supreme Court did not adopt the appellate division's recommendation or holding, actually, in the Kane University case. But at the same time, I think public bodies need to, and in my view, have to, take a fresh look to make sure that no one can use language from the Supreme Court and say, you know, the Supreme Court has encouraged clarity and precision where possible, right? If you're going in to discuss student disciplinary matter, you're not going to say the name of the student. But from my view, there is nothing that you give away. Everybody knows if you're in collective negotiations with the teachers or not. So rather than say, contract negotiations, which again, is not really precise. Say you're discussing the status of the negotiations with the BHEA, that's not going to be a secret. So that's my recommendation. Because I think if one of the frequent flyers who pop up from now and again, and they don't necessarily have to have a connection with your community to do it, were to challenge you, that's a pretty easy thing for them to point to and it's equally easy for us to avoid it.
So good, thank, thank you. I think one of our takeaways, I think we will need to do a little bit more to clarify some of those items based on your suggestion. I think we tend to, at times, as Bill said, do those. So thank you for your advice. And I think at the end, now you're going to talk about the last topic on negotiations.
Yes, sir.
Great.
Okay. So in different conversations in recent years, I've discussed this particular topic with Doug and Bill. So quite frankly, I could just probably mute my mic and let them run the last section here. So this is a topic really many school districts find very frustrating. The frustration is that in a general sense, when you have a when you have a collective bargaining unit and you are in the process of collective bargaining, you are obligated to undertake the negotiations only through the designated representatives of the collective bargaining unit. So what that means is, as negotiations drag on and you are damn certain that A, the representatives of the teachers are being unreasonable, and B, that they're not necessarily given their rank and file, all of the wonderful, kind, generous things that you're putting on the table. You want to get out there and just tell the community and the teachers, "Here's what's going on. I know we're being painted in a bad light here, but we really do want to sell this thing, and we really are being very generous with you, and what we're presenting is above the county average already. We can't do more than that." But in the general sense, you can't. That would be an unfair labor practice because it would be deemed as a circumvention of the designated representatives. So the question is, what is it that you can do publicly when you're engaged in collective negotiations and not run afoul of perk, not commit an unfair labor practice? Spoiler alert. Everything I tell you from this point will not, if you follow everything I tell you, it will not prevent you from being accused of an unfair labor practice. I can't do that. We went over due process a little while ago. Another part of the wonder that is America is anybody can bring a suit against anybody for anything. So I can't prevent you from being accused. I can put you in a position where you can successfully defend yourself, and that's what my aim is here. So when you're talking about negotiations, process is always appropriate. So if you were to be given a public update about what's going on, "We met three times. We didn't meet. Our attorney offered a meeting. The union didn't get back to us." All of that is process. Never a legitimate issue there. You are free to update the board in public about the process. "We met for five minutes. They walked out. Our negotiator sent them an email and will get back to us." All that process, no substance, fine. The second are the issues, right? The issues at the bargaining table. Can we say what our concern is about salary? Can we say what we really want to do about benefits? Well, not really. That is to say, if you were to discuss publicly what it is you've put on the table with the union negotiators and haven't heard back or haven't been happy with what you have heard back, and instead reveal that to the public, i.e. to the folks in the collective bargaining unit, you would be committing an unfair labor practice. But that does not mean that you couldn't have regular, open discussions about the cost of health benefits, the status of the salaries, the generosity of Berkeley Heights's existing salary guide, which of course is a public document. So there are a whole host of things you can do to try to demonstrate your reasonableness to the public at large, which includes, of course, your taxpayers and the teachers. And so long as you are not quote-unquote bypassing the duly designated representatives by providing specifics, you are free to speak to the public. One of the things that a lot of boards do, and I think it's very admirable, is just like all committees, there is a regular update about what's going on with collective bargaining. Maybe that there's nothing going on because there's a six-month period. We're not in the middle of negotiating anything. That's okay. But what I think that does for you is sort of builds a bit of a firewall against the idea that the only time you give one of these general discussions about the cost of teacher salaries, the escalating health benefits cost, et cetera, is when you're mired in negotiations and you're trying to circumvent the duly designated representatives. So regular updates on collective negotiations, or regular updates on the cost of health benefits, regular updates on the finances of the district as part of your DNA, makes it easier for you to have these general discussions where, of course, you're trying to provide the public with information about what concerns you as fiduciaries of public money without being effectively accused of trying to slip in their details that really should only come through their negotiations. It is possible, by the way, that everything that we're discussing could be mooted if the parties agreed to ground rules. They would govern if you agreed that the only public comments made by anybody about the negotiations would be if the head of your negotiating committee and the head of the teachers' negotiating committee agreed to release a statement. Otherwise, there should be no public discussions about the status of negotiations. Sometimes, those are ground rules that the parties agree to for whatever reason. If you were to agree to those ground rules and then say anything, that's an unfair labor practice charge, even if they're among the most benign things that could be possibly said. Otherwise, negotiations proceed without any public discussion about the details of what you have put on the table. And there's no question that that puts management at a disadvantage, but these are the rules with which we live. The only exception to that comes is if you go to fact-finding. That is, if you've gotten to the point where negotiations have reached an impasse. You're working with a fact-finder. Now, at that point, you've been in negotiations for two or three years, and you're already dealing with angry teachers and probably angry parents at your board meetings. When a fact-finder report comes out, you are prohibited from discussing it publicly for 10 days. The hope being, under the law, that within those 10 days, the parties will take a look at what the fact-finder has recommended, and you'll reach an agreement. But after those 10 days, if you don't have an agreement, you are required to make the fact-finder report public. And there, of course, would be all of the details about the collective negotiations and where each party sit now and where the fact-finder thinks the settlement ought to be. So up until that point, the only way your negotiations become public is when they conclude and the parties vote on a memorandum of agreement.
Great, Vito, thank you very much. Any other questions for Vito? Other general questions on topics that he did not cover? Great, Vito, as always, thank you for your advice and counsel. I appreciate that. And of course, you joining us remotely tonight. Thanks again.
Well, as always, my privilege to represent you. It's good to see you all. I know this is an awkward format, but thank you for the opportunity to spend some time with you. And I don't know how we're going to do Atlantic City virtually in October, but hopefully, this will be long gone by then.
Hey, Vito, before you go?
Yes, sir.
The Mets are tied for first place.
I have, in an effort to boost the morale at my firm, I send emails periodically. And you'll be happy to know, Bill, I punctuated the last one by telling people to cheer up. The Mets are undefeated, and the Yankees haven't won a game.
Okay.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Vito. Great. Melissa, I assume that that concludes your superintendent's report?
My very short superintendent's report is over.
Exactly. Great, thank you. Moving on. The next item is the presentation of our budget. Just some context before we vote on that. So we adopted a budget back on our March 12 meeting. And at our last meeting, Donna shared an update from the facility, from the finance committee, excuse me, with a proposed revision. What you see on the agenda tonight is a vote on that, on that adjustment based on additional savings for the taxpayers. Are there any comments or questions about that? Okay, could I have a motion for the approval of item 11 on the budget?
I'll move 11A.
A second.
All right, some motion and a second. We need all the board members to go off of mute now. Is there any other discussion? Doesn't sound like it. Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. DiQuillo?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano? Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch? Mr. Reinsdorf?
Yes. Liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports tonight? I think we have one or two. Mike, Mike, do you want to start?
Yes. As requested from the last board meeting, the facilities committee met to review when we can reschedule the referendum vote to fund the various capital improvements needed in the school district. The committee met with our district architect to review options on when we can hold the vote. We also asked if it was still possible to do the construction required to accommodate full-day kindergarten next fall, in the fall of 2021. From our discussions with proper planning and schedule adherence, if the referendum was held and passed in the first quarter of 2021, the architect feels we could complete the design and construction in time to start full-day kindergarten in the fall of 2021. A lot of planning and work is needed to be done to meet the schedule. So tonight, the committee would like to get the opinion of the full board if we should continue to work through the details to solidify a plan and schedule, determine when in the first quarter of 2021 to hold this referendum vote and to continue the planning required from a facility standpoint to have full-day kindergarten in 2021. So again, I would like to open it up to the board for any questions or comments and to get feedback if this is the direction the committee should continue to work towards with respect to the referendum and full-day kindergarten potential for 2021 fall.
So just to make sure I understand, so we're saying that we would choose for a referendum possibly February of 2021? And we believe that if we were to do that and it were to pass, we would be able to do full-day kindergarten, certainly in September of that same year?
That is correct.
And, and, and we're talking about authorizing us to, to work towards that, but we would have, I mean, you know, it's hard to imagine what the world's going to look like in February. It could, it could look, it could look, you know, good. It could look bad. It probably isn't going to look great. So, so I guess the question, we're not authorizing the referendum. We're saying work towards it, and we'll have another opportunity whether or not to go ahead with it. Is that right?
That is absolutely correct. So again, we're just looking for the opinion if we want to continue towards, come back to the board, full board for an overall vote for that, yes.
It seems like the right way to go.
Thank you, Bill.
Any other comments from Mike?
I think if that's a possibility, if we're able to do that, I definitely think that's the way to go.
Thank you.
Any others?
Well, the only thing I would add is, Mike, refresh my memory, but I think what the architect told us in this effort to move towards a referendum was that we have a 60-day requirement to the, to the county to let them know if we're going to move forward with the referendum. So that, that does give us, you know, a runway here to assess what's going on in, you know, in our current environment and then make the decision to go or not to go.
So effectively, December is the deadline for February.
60 days from whatever date we would choose to go to referendum. Say it was early March or end of January or whatever. For some reason, they said February is a good time. I can't recall what.
That's one, that's not one of the dates that are, there's only certain dates throughout the year that we can hold referendums.
There you go. But whatever date it is, just back the bus up 60 days. And that's really where we would have to make a go or no-go decision.
Right. And the architect was pretty convinced that even if we were to do this, say, in March, that there would be enough time that they would be able to get this ready.
Okay, so what I think I'm hearing is, I think I'm hearing support for the facilities committee to continue along that process, to work through a revised timeline and to come back to the full board eventually with a recommendation for what month and what the timing would be. Has anybody, I think I'm capturing or summarizing that. Is anybody not in support of that? Okay, good. So Mike, thank you. And the facilities committee will continue that conversation with Donna and architects to do that.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Other liaison reports?
Yeah, so we had the inaugural meeting of the curriculum committee. This is a committee that Dr. Varley suggested we form. We, and, and it was really, it was a very good meeting. Some of the topics that were discussed were K through 12, social, emotional learning, the foundations of that, an effort to have that be integrated into aspects of the Children's Day as opposed to, you know, by appointment. And the district has been accepted into the Teachers College Project School, which is a broader opportunity for professional development. We were updated on the middle school electives. I think this is the third phase of it. And, and updated on how COVID-19 is affecting the, the curriculum and the planning for the curriculum going forward. So it was a very, very good meeting. Mr. McKinney, Dr. Varley, Ashley Janosko had called into it as well.
Great, thanks, Bill. Any other liaisons?
Yeah, we, we, we met on the athletic committee. And some of this is already dated. We had hoped at that point we would have some spring season. So at that point, we're discussing what that may look like. Obviously, that's behind us now. We also discussed how the coaches are interacting with their students during this remote learning environment. We discussed the stipends that the coaches were receiving. Booster Club, Booster Club, since we definitely will have an issue with banquet this year, they are purchasing gifts for the seniors. They'll also be displaying banners for senior athletes. And I believe they'll be displaying them either in the front of the school or at Memorial Field. Moving forward, the Athletic Honor Society Awards will be given out in the fall to seniors, and we'll send plaques to their house. And looking towards next year, hopefully, we'll be back to normal. We had some discussion on Friday Night Lights, as well as Fantastic Friday and Super Saturday. Dates are set, and flyers will be prepared as we speak. Winter sports season and the fall sports season schedules are complete. And the Highlander Strong T-shirt fundraiser that's going on right now, so I highly recommend everyone get themselves a T-shirt to show their support for the school.
Great, thanks, Dante. Are there any other?
Yeah, I have a question. Are we, are we, are we giving out varsity letters for the spring sports? Are we giving no letters? How are we handling that?
You know, it was a discussion about letters. And I don't know that we finalized that. We're still looking into it. I believe if we're going to be looking at giving out those letters in the fall. That's, you know, it's a good question.
I'm not sure of the answer to that either. I know Rob Nixon is intending. Maybe he has the answer to that question. Mike, if you can promote him real quickly?
Well, while we're promoting Rob, I think I might, I'll let Rob come in and...
You know, we did discuss that. I just don't think we finalized it.
I, I'll let Rob go.
Hi, everybody. Hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, so we had discussions upon, on that. And there are a lot of different layers involved in that discussion. I know we have been steadfast with one philosophy as far as everything here. And that is, you know, that involves, we don't want these current circumstances to penalize students. So I know Ms. Clifton is working with the coaches right now to discuss, you know, the various athletes that are on their team and who they anticipate would have received varsity letters and things like that. And they're working through a process that they'll be able to announce, you know, who receives varsity letters and who doesn't. I know one of the questions we've also been getting is because of the timing when all of this occurred. We never got to have that winter varsity letter ceremony either. So Ms. Clifton is currently working through procedures to award both varsity letters from this past winter season as well as this spring season.
Great, thanks, Rob.
You got it.
Thank you, Rob.
I had a quick update. Dr. Varley and I met with the president of the Berkeley Heights Education Foundation on April 21st via Zoom. And we met with all the members, and we just really talked about what was going on. what was going on, some of the fundraisers, what we would be having, and it was really just a report on what everybody is doing at this point. So there's more to come with that. So just a quick update there.
Any other liaison updates?
The county's school boards had a meeting last week, Doug was also in attendance, and they discussed the superintendent evaluation and various legislation that is forthcoming. New Jersey school boards is working with local districts as best they can to help them through some of this virtual learning and the obstacles they're encountering. And Union County Ed Services, they're really struggling with the one-on-one IEPs and their summer school programs, so they're working on pulling those programs together.
Great, thank you, Helen. And did I miss anybody or any other ones? I think we probably got them all. Okay, moving on, Donna, facilities.
They'll all be happy to know tomorrow the HVAC unit is going to be delivered to the high school, and it will be installed over in the media center. All of the electrical work, et cetera, has been done, so the last steps are to do the final completions and then have final testing. So that project should be done within the next two weeks.
Great, thank you. Moving on, we are now at the preliminary citizens' hearing. If you have a comment or a question, if you can use the raise your hand functionality, and we will recognize you, we'll unmute you, and we will then be able to have a conversation. I do not see anybody's hand raised right now, but I'll pause and realize you have to find the raise your hand functionality first. I see one, I seen that one now. Susan Pogue. Mike, if you can unmute Susan?
Already done, sir.
Okay. Susan, welcome.
Hi. How are you? So I had a question. I saw the council on instruction minutes, well, I'm wearing my teacher hat right now. So I was wondering about the professional development for the new readers workshop and how we're going to handle that if we're not in school in September.
So Teachers College, the PD is all in person, so they will start that whenever we get back in person. It will not be, you won't be required to do online PD for Teachers College.
And what about delivering the instruction, though, as of September? Will we be delivering instruction?
Yeah, you're going to, of course.
No, with the new program, though.
No, you won't be expected at that time, no. Not without, not without being trained.
Great, yeah. Online, yeah, online remote learning is challenging in itself, so I just was curious about that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Is there anybody else? Is there anybody else who wants to be recognized, ask a question? I don't see any other hands raised. I'll pause for another second. Okay, not seeing anybody. Not seeing anybody, I will close this portion of the meeting for the preliminary citizens' hearing. I want to pause for a second. There's one item that we not neglected, we were talking about recognition of educators. We also, and we just finished our facilities report, is our facilities manager, Anthony Amiano, was recognized by the, was the facilities manager of the year by the organization of facilities managers. I'm sure I did not get that exact name right, but anyway, across all the state of New Jersey, Anthony Amiano's been a longtime employee of ours, was recognized by his organization as the facilities manager of the year. So I know there was a tap into article about that, so I know he got some recognition in the community, but given that we were talking about educators of the year, I wanted to just pause and make sure that we also publicly recognize Anthony for the work that he's done. With that, I will continue on to the other parts of the agenda. Let's go to number 15, depositories.
I move item 15A.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? We'll need all the board members to go off of mute so we can do the voting. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. De Quilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes. Item 16, newspapers?
I move item 16, newspapers.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. De Quilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes. Number 17, appointments?
Move item 17A, appointments.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. De Quilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes. 18, administration.
Move 18A through D.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. De Quilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes. 19, education.
Move 19A through D.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. De Quilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes. 20, personnel?
Move 20A through I.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. De Quilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes. 21, business?
Yes, I'll move 21A through Z.
One second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. De Quilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes, I'm staying on B and E.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes. 22, finance?
I'll move finance A through D. I repeat the bill, socially distancing myself from the staff there, and everything was fine. Good job, as usual.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. De Quilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes.
So Jerry, it's easier to park up there now.
Very easy, amazing. It was a pleasure.
Is there any, is there any other business to come before the board tonight? Not hearing anybody. I will thank everybody for their participation. We will be back next on Thursday evening, June 11. That is our annual recognition of student achievement, which will, like the last couple of meetings, will be different than we've done in the past, but we will hopefully find a way to recognize the achievement of our students. With that, enjoy the rest of the evening. We are adjourned. Thanks again.
Thank you. Be well.
Thank you. Good night.